There we go. Good evening, everyone. We're going to call to order the Code Forcement Appeals Board at 6:03. Could you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we go ahead and get a roll call, please?
Chairperson Tennyson?
Present.
Vice Chairperson Schultz?
Present.
Board Member Cavalli?
Present.
Board Member Gaddis?
Present.
Board Member Taylor?
Present.
And Board Member Uretta?
Present.
Thank you for that. Moving on to the item number four, the Consent Calendar and the Approval of the Agenda in Minutes for May 22, 2025 for the Regular Meeting Minutes. Board Members, could you please review? And I would like a motion from the floor for approval. So, we'll go ahead and actually need to separate that because Board Member Gaddis wasn't here for the last meeting on May 22, 2025, so she'll abstain from the approval. But the rest of the members were here during that time, so please review and then provide your approval.
I move to approve the minutes from the Thursday, May 22, 2025 meeting.
Second.
Thank you. We have a second. Can we take a roll, please?
Chairperson Tennyson?
Approved.
Vice Chairperson Schultz?
Approved.
Board Member Cavalli?
Approve.
Board Member Taylor?
Approved.
And Board Member Uretta?
Approve.
unanimous.
Thank you very much. Looking out in the audience, I'm trying to see if we have our City Council Liaison available for the...
Through the chair, you have to adopt the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda for...
Second.
I move to approve the agenda for today's meeting for June 26, 2025.
I second it.
Yes, can we get a roll call, please?
Chairperson Tennyson?
Approved.
Vice Chairperson Schultz?
Approved.
Board Member Cavalli?
Approve.
Board Member Gaddis?
Yes.
Board Member Taylor?
Approved.
And Board Member Uretta?
Oh, yeah. I saw that.
Thank you. Now moving on to our City Council Liaison Report, and I don't see our City Council here today, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the Community Forum.
Thank you, Chair. Can somebody turn over the mic? Schultz? Thank you, Chair. Currently, I have one member of the public in person signed up for the Community Forum and have two with their hands raised online. I'll go ahead and call up the first speaker. Mu Heng, please come to the podium. One second, Mu. Go ahead.
Are you objecting to a specific special assessment?
So when your case is called... He didn't appeal. My apologies continue.
So Karen, just real quick, if he's here to actually plead his case, is that the idea for the appeal? Appeal the case?
So he's... He has not submitted a purple form, an objection form, so the only time he could speak is right now during this open forum. And his address is item number 102 on the list. And so he's using the translator device to explain his case. Traditionally, if they don't turn in their objection forms, the only time they can speak is during the open forum. So I don't know if they want to move the open forum to the end of the meeting, like after the, you know, when the appellant speak. I don't know. Just leave it where it is.
With regards to that, three minutes is not going to be sufficient for this process with this gentleman in order to get enough information?
It's his only chance to speak to anybody about it.
Can we move him to the end of our meeting?
That would mean you would move the entire Community Forum to the end of the meeting.
Right.
So that would be your decision, and he would have to stay back.
Yeah, and it still would be the same three minutes.
No, I think when you have an interpreter or interpreter service, you get as much time as you need. Yeah.
So then with regards to that, we can go ahead through the process at this point in time and not move it to the end and just go ahead and hear the gentleman at this point in time.
Right. It was explained to him over the phone, but I think he still wants to have a chance to speak with you guys.
Okay. Thank you. Sir, go ahead and proceed, please.
I received a letter from my wife, but there was no English speaking at home, so I couldn't figure out what to do. That's why I'm sending this letter.
Okay, so when we spoke over the phone...
Board members, as you can see, there was some interruption in translation in regards to the process of how we handle our cases here. So with that being said, I will take any response from our board members as to whether or not, how we want to handle the case. It's $1,558.85, and it appears that he received notification but was unable to understand the notification, read the notification. So there's no clarity to the process here. I would lean on my city attorney in order to see if there's any leeway here with regards to this.
Well, he did... Let me clarify. He contacted you, correct?
Yes, he did.
And what... Do you remember what he said then?
Well, he spoke to me today, and he was trying to explain to me that his... He was in... He was out of the country when he received the notice, and I think his mother was at home, and she didn't speak any English, and he said that she threw the paper away and that, I guess, so they didn't receive notice. And then when things came in, it was just, you know, the bills after that.
So he doesn't... He didn't fill out a form. It wasn't that it was late. He just didn't...
There was no appeal. There was no anyone contacting except there was someone else. I don't know. I don't... It wasn't him. It was someone, another person who contacted us a couple of weeks ago, trying to speak on his behalf.
Why don't we move this off of tonight's agenda and staff can meet with him online? Because we don't even have a basis for the appeal.
Well, that's kind of... Yeah. And also, as well as who was the officer that went out, made the contact, and then repeated, yeah.
In-person translator?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So do we need to make a move and have a motion from our board in order to...
No.
Okay.
So let's move that to another scheduled date and time? No, it wouldn't be to another meeting. It would be staff would meet with him offline.
Got it. Okay. So with that regards... Go ahead.
So eventually, eventually, when we do the full list, the board needs to make this direction saying, remove this item from the list, and then later on, you okay the full list minus this and any other adjustment you're going to make. So at the end of the night, I think when we do the full list...
You can direct staff as to what to do with this case, depending on what we... What staff determines during the interview with the property owner.
And that won't be tonight. That'll be when staff meets with them after that conversation.
No, you would direct, make a direction now, and then it would be resolved later after tonight.
So staff will meet with the gentleman and then provide information as to what the next steps are in regards to his case?
So we've done this before, where we made arrangements for payment, and the board, for example, when they made their motion, they would say, with the exception, we approve the report with the exception of A, B, C, and D. And, you know, H and I will be entering into a payment plan under the terms that we discussed. And what you can do, we can think of some language, because I don't know anything about his case other than what, he didn't get notice, but he did... He was notified, but he didn't get actual notice. He got constructive notice. Yeah.
So we can move this now, right? We can take this off?
We'll take... No, we'll continue with Community Forum, and then when, at the time of the hearing, public hearing, you can take an action and direct as to this item.
Okay, after hearing. Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes. Yes. Okay, so someone needs to let him know he can sit down.
So we'll go ahead and just have the gentleman to go ahead and sit down at this point in time, and then we'll come back and during another point in time in our meeting today, we'll redress this case with you.
Yes, you may sit down and stay... And stay. Yeah.
Thank you, Chair. We do have two other members of the public with their hands raised. Something tells me they might actually want to speak on the action item, but let's check and see. Ronan, please unmute yourself. You have the floor. Hi, sorry, this is Matt, not Ronan. Matt, you have the floor. Okay, Ronan, let's try that one more time. Please unmute yourself. Go ahead. Hi, Ronan, if you're still around, please try to find better connection. You keep breaking up. No other speakers at this time, Chair.
Thank you very much. With that being said, let's move on to... It's just blanked out on me for some reason. Okay. All right. So moving on to presentations and accommodations. Do we have no presentations as of today? So now we're moving on to our new and unfinished business, which is the public hearing to confirm and levy the special assessments for the unpaid fees, administrative charges, citation fines, and abatement costs. Trying to rely on... Trying to rely on. Okay. Yeah, let me get that. I'll take this. Okay. Yeah. Yep, here we go, okay. Yep, that's the case, yep. So with that being said, so, we're going to start with. So, having mentioned that the, the special assessments hearing, uh, is begun, at this hearing, the Code Enforcement Appeals Board will listen to any testimony and accept evidence regarding discrepancies relating to the amount of the special assessment. Please note that the time for a regular appeals hearing has been, has expired and the Code Enforcement Appeals Board will not receive testimony or evidence related to the validity of the underlying violation. The board will only be reviewing the cost accounting of the assessments and making sure that the figures are correct. With that being said, I open up the, uh, for, for, um, the openly hearing for case number zero, zero, five, seven, one, 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 zero, two, zero, case CE two-three dash one-three, zero, zero, address is...
Through the chair. Um, Chair Tennyson, you skipped number one.
Gotcha, got it, got it, okay.
Thank you.
Apologize, paperwork is all a little... So let's try this again. Um, case number is VA two-four dash zero-two-zero-eight and that is for eight-two-seven Fifth Street in Vallejo, the appellant's name is Diana Peppers.
This is my first hearing, I don't really know how this goes or what questions I can ask, so I don't know if you, someone can clarify it for me?
Could you move the microphone closer to a little bit?
This better? Okay, I haven't come to one of these before, so I don't know anything about it. All I know is, I live in Wisconsin and I received this notice certified, I haven't received anything prior to this. So when I got this, I did call and ask questions, but I really didn't get any answers except that when I asked what these are for, they just told me if I wanted to appeal it, to fill out that form. That's all I got. Um, since I can't really, it says on here that the hearing has gone and passed, but I wouldn't have known when the hearing was or how to appeal it because the only notice I got was the certified mail. Without knowing anything and without knowing what these citations are for, I guess my only question is, I can only ask about the amounts, is that correct? Yes, no, okay. So I don't know what these are for, but with these amounts, not knowing what they're for, I kind of also feel like they're excessive because you're telling me that I received a citation for two-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and then a penalty for five-hundred-and-three dollars, which is way more than the actual citation. So that's double the citation, so if, if the citation was fifty dollars, the penalty would still be five-hundred-and-three dollars? So I, I'm, I guess those are my questions because I don't know.
Is this the presiding officer that was on the case for, okay, if you have some information, sir? You have any information regarding, uh, the dates and the times that you were out at the, at the address? Uh, and you can show those, uh, dates and times and that you provided the necessary information to the property.
Through the chair, Scott, can you turn on your microphone, please? Press that button in front of you. There you go.
Uh, yes, I have.
So if you, if you want to proceed, sir, and tell those, those dates and times that you were out there for citations, was it, uh, citations one, two, um, and, and your process?
Uh, yes, uh, so I, uh, sent the, uh, warning notice via certified and regular mail. Uh, I confirmed that it was, uh, signed for, uh, via certified. Uh, that's before I go forward with the citation. And every citation that I've posted to the property, I've also made contact with somebody at the property, uh, that said that they've made contact with the owner.
Do you have the actual signed certifications on who actually signed for it? Because I never got those.
Uh, it just says that it was delivered.
And ma'am, you, you said you received the, the last one, correct?
I received this one.
Um, and were, were these certifications mailed to the same address? All, all three of them?
All, all three, yes. Uh, they were also posted to the property. Uh, I also extended the timeframe because we're supposed to follow up every thirty days. I've actually even given almost two months before following up on the property.
Which again, I'll, I have not gotten any records of those or, or heard anything prior to this.
What is your?
Could you give us a detailed, um, explanation of what these citations is, are for and then maybe it'll get some regulation with the client?
Uh, it started as multiple in-op vehicles on the property.
In-op vehicles, thank you.
So these are all different events or different vehicles, not all one? I don't, and I don't know because, like I said, I, I live in Wisconsin and our property is, was rented.
So these are your tenants that are in the property with these potential vehicles that we're talking about?
I'm assuming so, yes.
Are they still there?
No.
The tenants are gone?
The tenants are gone.
What date did they leave, you have that timeframe?
Uh, they left March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, to be exact.
These citation dates on here are seven sixteen twenty twenty-four, eight twenty-seven twenty twenty-four, and eleven twenty-seven twenty twenty-four.
Which means if he gave it to them, then it was the tenant's vehicles, not mine.
Mr. Tennyson, if I could make some clarification. The notices are sent to the record, uh, property owners' record on file with the Salano County and that's the only record that we could come up with with the Salano County skip system and also another software called Property Radar trying to get to the property owner's correct mailing address. And that's all it's required for us to do, we can't do any more than that. And to go beyond that, the officer even posts the property trying to get more notification. So as far as the property owner not receiving the notice, it may be that they didn't update their mailing, uh, address with the county. Therefore, if we don't, if they don't update the record of the mailing address, there's no way for us to track the owners down. So as far as the code enforcement officers go, they did as much as we can as allowed by the ordinances stating that we have to send it to the record on file where the mailing address is for the property owner.
And, okay, and if it's a tenant that stays there and they're getting notices on their vehicles, um, I don't know if they've corrected the action if, like, when they're, they're no longer there, the vehicles are no longer there. So how do I determine if these vehicles are abandoned?
So I have a quick question. Um, the, the notice that you have with you today, what is the notice address of, the address to that notice?
The notice on this address is the address, uh, where the, the eight twenty-seven Fifth Street, yes.
Okay. So that notice is at the actual physical address where the tenants were, correct?
Yes.
Okay. How did you get a hold of the notice?
It came certified mail once they moved out, the person that moved in gave me the notice.
Okay, so then the new tenant moved in and had the notice delivered to them and they forwarded that notice to you?
Yes.
So I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You said you live in Milwaukee?
I live in Wisconsin, yes.
And how long have you been residing in Wisconsin?
In Wisconsin, I've been there for eight years.
Okay, so, um, did you give the city of Vallejo or the county of Salano your new address in order to pay, like?
All of that goes through my mortgage company, so everything that's assessed through there, all of my mail for that or this, that's paid through my escrow.
Like taxes and all that?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay, so they wouldn't have your, all right.
What about any billings like PG&E or how does that work? Because you have to.
I put, when I left, I put in a change of address, so I don't have any bills for PG&E or anything like that. So I haven't had that.
So you put a change of address in to the post office?
Yes.
For those bills, but not with your mortgage company, they didn't have your new change of address?
They have my change of address.
Okay.
So unfortunately, we're not here today to assess whether, you know, it's yours, whether or not, you know, you had knowledge of the vehicles or if it was, um, you know, your responsibility as the property owner. You do have a responsibility to ensure that your property is kept up to code, um, even if you have tenants there. So it's wise to keep your address information updated, um, so that you can receive any notices as needed. Um, is there any reason that you would dispute? Um, I know you did start to get into your concerns about like the late payment, the fees of the, on the bills here. Is there any reason that you have a concern about the amount of the payment for these?
Well, be, I have a, um, basically just appealing it all because I don't know, because I'm just seeing citation one, two, three. Like, I don't know what it's for, I don't know if it's for grass, I don't know if it's for fence, I don't know if it's for a vehicle. And when I call, I couldn't get any information to know if it's mine, if it's theirs, I don't know what it is by this. If this had come in the mail with maybe the violations behind it or the extra information, then I would be able to determine what the violation was for. And then, but all I got was this saying I owe three thousand and something dollars. You know, and that's, that's kind of discouraging saying, why do I owe this much money? And then when I'm looking at it, I'm like, okay, two-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars for a citation and then five-hundred dollars for a late fee up. And I'm saying that's way more than what the citation is for, this is all I'm seeing though. Even when I'm looking at it, since I'm only, since when I'm reading this, I said I can only talk about the accounting portion. It, that also is not adding up.
Yeah, so typically.
So I don't know.
Yeah, typically with this process, those, all of, each of those citations does come with a, an opportunity for you to respond, an opportunity for you to remedy the situation and an appeal period. This particular meeting, uh, so normally throughout the year, we have other meetings where you can address, you can argue about, you know, whether or not the violation has been corrected and different things like that. This particular meeting is specifically for the assessment of all of the fees and that's why, um, that, that was the directive for today. Unfortunately, your time period to appeal and dispute the underlying facts of your case has passed. Um, so is there any?
Yeah, but I haven't gotten an appeal process because this, like, I got this and all it says is it passed and I'm like, okay, this is all I had to go by.
So with that being said, and I appreciate where you're going with that, um, with the fact that she has not received those notifications, um, to herself, um, but they were sent to the address and if it was left up to the, um, the tenant to provide that information to, uh, the landlord and they probably did not because they did not want to, uh, be, uh, be, um, responsible for the fees, they were evading that as well. Um, I would ask my city attorney if she has any input that she would want to, uh, provide to us or even, um, Mr. Dong, our officer, yeah? Are we able to, uh, make some arrangements with this?
Well, you, you, you are, but I would, um, reiterate or emphasize again that just because the tenant didn't turn over the notice, she was under an obligation to update her address with the county because that's, the reason she didn't is because she pays all of her property taxes through her, her escrow, so that's why she didn't. But you do have an obligation to do that, to go to Salano County and fill that out and tell them where to mail. You know, you have a mailing address as opposed to like where you reside and what the property that you own, oh.
But I do it with the post office as well, so, I mean, I still, I, and, and I see what you're saying, but that's one of the reasons I have an escrow, is for it to go directly from there. I'm not assuming that every, I mean, how many, I guess I would have to make a list of everything that I'm, that I would have to do that, but this is not one, this is like a special case, I'm not assuming, oh, I'm going to get a whole bunch of fines from the city of, of Vallejo, so I have to call the county and call the city.
No, you don't have to call them.
Or, or, or send them something, I'm.
You just have to change your address with them because at the end of this special assessment hearing, any assessments would be levied against your property and they would be collected, they'd be transmitted to the county and they'd be collected with your taxes. So that's where they get, they go to the county to see where you've registered your property address for the property. And that's how you would, so you do need to notify them that you have a different mailing address. It could be, you know, someone else could assess you, it doesn't have to be the city, it could be the county or something, I don't, you know, so you need to do that.
Yeah, also the post office, they only, I think they only do it for six months for the forwarding.
And they're not very good about it, it's happened to me before too.
And with regards to that, you also have your, like you said, a tax assessor who has to assess taxes, but also needs to know your next address or where you're living at in order to provide you necessary documents and information. So all of that has to be able to go to some person, which would be you. And if they have only your mortgage company to send it to or the house that, that you're renting now and you're not going back there and picking up mail and you're leaving the responsibility to your tenant to forward you any mail that belongs to you, um, that, that creates an issue for how this process works, right? So we're not able to, we're, we're, you're, you're kind of, uh, giving us not enough leeway to try to help you out here when you haven't done the, uh, one of the things that needs to be done in order to make sure we're able to help you. Does that make sense to you?
It does, but I mean, I would still have to, like I said, if, everything when I left, I thought I did correctly. You know, with the assumption that I, I did everything, ten year or eight years later, this is what I'm getting, I mean, I've never had to have an issue like this before. So this, and then again, it, I don't know either if they fixed it or what it is or, or what the issue is. Like I said, I don't know if it was, I don't know.
Let me, let me ask the officer a question. Has the vehicles been removed off of the, um, site at this point in time?
No, what I was going to add is I've actually obtained her, uh, email. Uh, she had, she, the tenant had contacted me via email and Diane Peppers was on their, uh, CC'd under dianapeppers@icloud.com. Uh, I've responded to every one of those emails, uh, this case is actually still open uh, because I was trying to put off as much because I know these could get up to ten thousand dollars. So, but the case is still open and I believe there is still, uh, I want to say it's a Lexus vehicle.
So she was contacted via email as well?
I, yeah, I got all the emails right here.
Is there a response on here?
Uh, I would have to go through all these, uh, you are CC'd on all these, if you are dianapeppers@icloud.com, every one of these are CC'd to you. Uh, because again, I don't know if the person that's contacted me is a property owner or if it's, uh, the one that's CC'd on here. But I left that on there, I believe I have emailed you directly, uh, letting you know that the case was still open.
Well, I have to go back and look because I don't think I got those emails, but I'll go back and look. I will, because I, I don't know, I'm not going to sit up here and make up a story.
And I believe it's this vehicle right here that's still on the property. Which I believe is a Lexus.
Yes, this vehicle has a non-op assessment from the registrar, from the DMV, waiting for the title to come. But these vehicles, I, I mean, they're all moved.
Three of them.
So correction, if they're moved, I don't know if they're considered abandoned as well, because those are all her vehicles.
Okay. I believe in one of the emails, uh, your tenant stated that they were not her vehicles, that they were the property owner's vehicles.
Those are not my vehicles and I can send it to you from the DMV. All those are my vehicles and I don't live here, I live in Wisconsin. The only vehicle that's there that's getting ready to be moved was the, the one with, this one right here. Which has a non-op, registered non-op, these are all.
So let me go ahead and.
I did ask, I did call and ask for additional information when I got this notice and they told me, they couldn't give it to me, that's what they told me. And then they said that I would have to sign this and come to the hearing.
Ms. Peppers, stand by for one second, please, I'm sorry. Um, Officer Dong, can you kind of clarify some of the, uh, uh, fee schedule and some of the, um, late penalties that were applied to? Officer Dong, can you kind of clarify some of the fee schedule and some of the late penalties that were applied to this?
The late fees are set by the council with the, and it changes almost every year. They do a fee schedule, a, a study, and then they determine the the cost itself. And so it's approved by the council. It's something that we don't have any control over.
Copy that. With that being said, and I'll, I'll, I'll put this to the board for information, and you guys could probably, there's been the consensus here, and I definitely want to give you an opportunity to speak about it. With the fact that the officer has provided an email address that he's been reaching out to with your, and you've confirmed that that's actually your email address.
Well, confirming.
And that he has reached out on several occasions in order to try to reach you. It's unfortunate that the tenants didn't provide you with paperwork that you needed to. It is also unfortunate that you didn't know your opportunity, your obligation to register your new address with the, with the county and the city. I think some of the board members have had some ideas as to how we can help out a little bit. Okay?
But again, even with email, and I'm not disputing that he didn't do it. If it went to spam, I wouldn't have got it, you know, so I just want to say that, because I, 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 for one, can tell you this is, this is what I'm responding to. Had I got those, I probably would have responded to the emails.
Fair enough.
And I'll just note, you know, keep in mind, it's in your best interest as a property owner as well to ensure that your information is up to date, you know.
And you best believe I will be going to change my address.
Yeah, you know, in this situation, you're, you're on the receiving end of a negative notice, but, you know, it also could be you're getting notified of something important that's going on with your property, so.
Yes.
You know, I, I understand the concern.
Yeah. Just to sort of summarize the situation here. You have an obligation as a property owner to be reachable, and it doesn't look like you did the normal things to make yourself reachable, such as giving your address to the proper authorities. And they, on the other side of the coin, had an obligation to reach out to you, and they did their level best due to that. They went to your property, they put notices on there. If you had been a more proactive, or even active property owner, you would have noticed those. But you weren't on the scene. You were in Milwaukee. They sent you letters to the address of record, certified. So it looks like City of Vallejo did its due diligence in trying to notify you, but you were somewhat remiss in not being reachable. And so, given that, I think perhaps this fee is justified.
Well, mister, I just want to just, I mean, I kind of feel like that's an assumption that you're making, and I'll just say, I don't know when, if you've ever rented, and if, as a renter, if I'm a renter and I get something in the mail that's actually for my vehicles, and it's not for the owners, and it says that the vehicle need to be moved, I'm probably, as a renter, would not tell the owner if it's my vehicle, and I'm gonna probably correct it and take care of it. Which, which is, in this sense, that person's vehicles, which is probably why they did not tell me that the notices were coming. So it's not an assumption that I was irresponsible or negligent in knowing what goes on with my property. That's kind of an assumption you're making about me, which I, I do my due diligence as a homeowner and as a, a person, period, to make sure that I take care of all my responsibilities. Just like you, I'm a government official, so I have to have that integrity and make sure I'm responding to anything that comes my way. I'm not gonna just intentionally do something in the negative. Okay, so, so I'm not doing this as a, as a, if, if, if it's something that I know about, I'm gonna either correct it, or if it's my fines, I'm gonna pay it. I, I have no, no gist against that if it's, if it's, if I know about it, and I'm gonna take care of it. That's, that's the type of person that I am.
Okay, well, I'm not talking about your character, I'm just talking.
Well, you kind of was, and I, I'm, I mean, that's kind of how I took it, so to speak.
Okay, well, I'm just talking about being reachable, and, you know, maybe you weren't on site to be able to see the notices that were posted on your property. Maybe you didn't have friends on the scene that could tell you about these notices posted on your property. Maybe you didn't have an agent or somebody in the community that could tell you about these notices. But still, you should have put your address of record to the authorities so they could notify you. As a property owner, that's something that you should know about. If you want to be notified about things by the city, you have to give them your address, but they didn't, you didn't provide that.
But again, it, that, again, like I said, I will correct that. It was missed, because every other thing that I had in my name got transferred over, including the post office, including any bills, none of, none of my bills from the City of Vallejo or my PG&Es were ever late or didn't come to me. This, not too many times do you think you're gonna get mail outside of, if you have an escrow account, that you're gonna be aware that that's not gonna come to you, being that that's who pays my escrow. If I would have assumed that, or foresaw that I would have these type of things that would come up, I would have definitely changed my address with the City of Vallejo. This is not one that you just say, oh, make sure you change it with the city, the city and county. It's not something you usually, that's on your radar to do.
Thank you, Ms. Peppers. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. What I'd like to get some consensus from our members is, should we be looking at a payment program for Ms. Peppers to assist her? Due to the facts that she wasn't present at the property, the information never got forwarded to her as far as the certified mail, and then however, there were emails transitioned. So that would kind of not warrant us to have to, you know, try to reduce this fine, but also provide an opportunity for us to create a payment program for her. Would that be something that you would like to entertain?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. So with that being said, we would like to provide you with a payment program, which you can go ahead and talk, option, as our option, and you could talk to the staff in order to make those arrangements for that payment program, and I think they'd be more happy to talk to you about it.
Also, and I'd like to, like I explained him, I'd like to know where I can get some copies of those. So, because like I said, it's not my vehicle, so I want to make sure I take care of it, too. Whoever it is, it is gonna.
Yeah, we can also request that you receive copies of your full, all the citations.
Please, thank you.
Thank you.
So I think you need a motion, because we're gonna have to remove that off the list. I think we could do that after, because there's gonna be already maybe two.
Yeah, I have it.
Alright, moving on to our next item is the case number CE23-1300, 1104 Belmont Avenue, Vallejo, Solano, Jose Francisco. Is there anyone representing 1104 Belmont Avenue? Seeing no one?
Through the chair, let me check and see if the speaker online.
Thank you.
Represents that. Ronan, you've had your hand raised. Is this address yours?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, that is not me, I'm, but thank you for acknowledging that. I'm 2163 Garnet Circle. This is Richard F.
Thank you. We'll, we'll, we'll come back to you after we've gotten through the action calendar.
Absolutely, no problem, sir. No problem.
No other speakers at this time, Chair.
Thank you. So last call for case CE23-1300, 1104 Belmont Avenue, Vallejo, California. Alright, with that, no one being noted. We're move, that is a total fine of $9,586.23. Next case, CE231289. Address is number three, Fray Place, Vallejo, California, Evington Smith, Jr.
I'm present. This is Evington Smith. I'm standing in front of you guys, three Fray Place.
Hello, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Go ahead and proceed.
I'm just here for the financial assessment hearing, the stuff that, are you Scott Herndon? Yeah, he, he fined us. It was my mom's vehicle. She had a van. She, she's got some medical issues, and apparently I didn't get to the fine in time. I got two violations, no, one violation and two citations. By the time I was able to correct it and figure it out, I'm at $3,116. I called in and I asked upon receiving the second citation, and I spoke to Ms. Ms. Aang, Karen Aang, very rude to me on the phone, didn't help me out at all. And, you know, I was able to, I guess, get it fixed. I, I got the, the van towed. That ended up being a fallout with my mom, you know, because I didn't know exactly what needed to be done. I didn't know there was a, a certain issue with being parked in a driveway in Vallejo. So, yeah, that's all I got right now.
So the citation you have in front of me, was that the first hearing that you, the first time you've heard of this particular situation?
The second citation.
Second citation.
Whenever I fixed it, I, I put, I thought it was for a cover, maybe to just cover it up. The wording was a little off. I didn't understand it. It wasn't clear. I thought it was to be out of sight on a blight or something like that. We put a cut, a cover over it, and then we received more citations and more fines, so. Yeah, I mean, by the time I, I talked to someone with a little bit of sense, I just got it donated. We donated it.
So there, you had no inkling of any prior citations receiving a second violation?
No.
Second citation?
No.
Okay. Was there any conversation on the phone with anybody that you noted that you asked that question? Were there previous citations, seeing that you have a second one?
Uh, no, once I had the second one, I, I just, I, I talked to Karen Aang. I tried to come down there a few times. They wouldn't let me in. I mean, I wasn't being, you know, obnoxious or crazy or anything. I just, they just, there was no one to talk to, no one to talk to. I mean, until the, the payment ballooned up to $3,100 and.
So on February 21st, when the notice of violation went out, were you notified at that time?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, nor were you notified on the first citation on 416, right?
No, no, not to my knowledge, no. Nothing. Yeah, no certified mail or anything.
By the way.
The second citation, I received a certified mail.
Officer, were there any previous certificat- certified mail that was sent to the location?
Uh, yeah, so, let me. Am I on now? Uh, so yeah, I actually inherited this case. It looks like it started back in 2023, under Nicole Riggins. And then it got handed over, I believe that's where it went to the notice of violation. Then it got handed over to Sofia Valente, who is also no longer with the city. And I was basically trained on this case, because I took over her beat, after she took over Nicole's beat. And from my knowledge, we posted every citation on the property. And that's, that's how I was trained, is to post the citations on the property. But yeah, I inherited this case. I'm the one that closed it out.
I had a question for the appellant. So you mentioned that your mother was sick, and this somehow interfered with the process of, of getting the notices. Is that what happened?
Uh, I'm not sure what happened with the notices. It sounds like there was a bunch of different people on the case. She is sick. She is ill. She has dementia. I'm assuming that's why I didn't get the, the other citation, well, the second citation until I did, because it was after she was in her home.
So was, was she the person on site on the property that was receiving these notices?
I don't know if she received notices or not.
And we wouldn't know, because she has dementia. She couldn't tell us, right?
That's true.
So were there, Officer, were there posted on the veh- or vehicle, or doors, or windows? How was the posting?
I believe it's, when you walk up, it was posted on the column of the right side of the garage door, which is right there where you walk towards the main entranceway. And I went with Sofia both those times, because I was being trained under her.
Scott, can you speak into the, can you pull it towards you and repeat what you said?
Yes, sorry about that. Uh, yes, I believe the, the citations, because I believe that I was working with Sofia around the 416 posting, which is the first citation, because she was my training officer when I first started here. I started here back in March. So again, I inherited this case, and I went with her, I believe, both times to post the citation. And where we posted it, it was on the right side of the garage door, on a column, which leads up to the main entranceway.
So I, I believe, tell me, that code enforcement keeps track of all of the notices that they've sent, and they take photographs and pictures of all of the postings. So we, there are records, and I, I have a question. So all of the notices, the current one was mailed to you directly, is that right, to, to you?
I believe it was a certified, certified mail that was sent to me.
But it's in your name?
Yeah.
So the property is registered in your name?
It is.
So that, was that true during these previous notices as well?
I didn't receive any previous notices.
But you were the property owner?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You should have. Were you living at that property?
I wasn't.
Oh, okay.
I wasn't. I, I rented it out a few times. I'm, I'm off and on, so. I mean, but like I heard you guys say, it's not gonna be a good excuse at all. So I have, that's all I got. I mean, if you guys are gonna hit me with it, you gotta hit me, but.
Thanks. I just wanted some clarification.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm off and on. I've rented out the property several times since I've, I've owned it. But, no, that's all I got.
To the Chair, again, similar to the last case, we've mailed everything, regular mail and certified mail. As, as the officer stated, we post every one of them onto the property. Now, if the property owner's not there, or off and on, it is all we could do. And then if the old property owner does not receive, or failed to receive the notices, certified, regular, or posting, that's all we can do.
Okay. What about a reduction of the fines? I mean, it seems like, okay, you guys hit me with 409 the first time for, for just a notice. I mean.
Um, I, I, I wouldn't, I'd, I'd let the, the rest of the members entertain that conversation. However, at this point in time, it would be similar to the case prior to you that you heard, that you just alluded to. That is still your responsibility as the homeowner. And there's no specifics that we heard today that made it sound like there's a need to reduce the fine, so that we would stick with the fine. That's the conversation that we would have on the board shortly.
Even due to a medically handicapped woman not being able to receive the.
Totally understand that, but this is your property, right?
It is.
Okay, and you've received a notice already, correct? Certified.
The second one. You know, I mean, the 1,600 dollar one.
And the other notices have been posted on that property, and you were going through the property, because you, as you alluded, your mother was there on the property, so you were probably visiting at some point in time.
I didn't see the other notices. I didn't see the other ones. I mean, he said he posted them on the, on the door or something like that, so.
Correct.
They could have blown off. I don't know. I mean, I don't know if this is a stand-up guy either.
Thank you.
Um, be, before I finish, is there any way that, I'm not gonna be able to pay it. Should I just talk to her, or?
Will you be open to it?
Will you be open to a payment plan?
I can't do a payment plan. If you guys got to do the levy, I mean, against the property, I'm okay.
That's the only other option we have, unfortunately.
That's what I have to do.
Well, I actually had a question. Why wouldn't you be able to pay it?
Well, I don't have the money for one, and then, uh, for two, it's egregious. I mean, I'd rather, I'd rather you guys go through a different means of getting it, like levy on my, my property than I have to do that.
So, why don't you have the money to pay it?
I'm broke. Like saying it like that, I mean, does that make you feel better about it?
You got the money, you got the money.
Maybe you had a disability or something like that that was interfering. No? All right, thank you.
The, the only reason they ask is to see if there's any, any room for any type of accommodation that we could find, so we're, we're just trying to see what we can do.
One suggestion through the chair?
Yes.
Um, if, if you pay us directly, it's cheaper than us levying against the property because the, the county charges interest rates and it also could increase your mortgage, your monthly mortgage. So, that's why we suggest people try to go on a payment plan with us, because we don't add those extra stuff.
I'm glad that you finally gave me a suggestion.
And we'll definitely work with you on that payment plan.
So, is the payment plan decided, um, the situation and the option that you want to go, or are you just willing to go ahead and let it levy to that?
No, just let it levy. Yeah, it's very parasitic in here the way you guys handle business, so...
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to our next case. So, did we get that logged in as full? Okay.
Through the chair, the next appellant, um, he is actually requiring, he's sitting down right there and he's actually requiring, uh, the translator device as well. Well, uh, his case is actually on the docket, so, but you, you could do whatever you guys want to decide.
What is the language of translation? We seem to have...
Also Vietnamese.
It's the same. Uh, well, I think we, we deferred on that one because there were some issues with that translation device, um, where it was inaccurate. Um, I mean, we, should we, should we try it to see if, yeah, okay?
Give them the opportunity.
All right, with that being said, uh, we're calling case number VA twenty-four zero-two-eight-one, four oh nine, Little Peak Court.
No, it's six zero, six zero one... Make sure you're reading the appellants list, um, Chair Tennyson.
Yeah, looking at it.
It's the colorful list.
Okay. Should I pursue?
Stand by.
Oh.
Yeah, you can sit back down. Sorry, we skipped a case.
He's right under three Fray Place on that, on that shortlist. Okay, we're staying on the shortlist, guys, but we don't get confused. On the appellants list, there's fourteen names on that list.
Yeah, we have VA twenty-four zero-two-eight-one. Is that not correct?
Yes, it's six oh one, Fifth Street, and he, and he said a totally different address.
Oh, I see. Okay, there you go.
Yes, yes, yes. He, he, oh, he said your primary address. Oh, the mailing address.
This is this guy who has two different addresses.
No, 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 that's my home address.
Say, say the list.
Well, I guess either way is right, so...
Number four on the list. Stick with the list.
Guys, so VA two-four zero-two-eight-one.
Okay, now I guess stand over there. Okay.
All right.
Okay. Well, I am the, well, I'm, uh, owner of the six zero one Fifth Street. And that two car, which is, he gave a ticket for it, I have no any idea what kind of car is. And that belong to my number F. I have a six plax over there. That's one of them, and, uh, it is a number F. And the first time I received the ticket, I handed them the original ticket, which I made a copy for it. I keep the original. I give the, the ticket to the tenant. And they got their names on it, which is, it's got names on it and their phone numbers. I ask them to call, um, to solve this problem, which is, I think, about three hundred some dollars. And then from that day after that, I never heard again. So, maybe a month later, or I don't know, maybe a month and a half later, I received a second notice, which is sent it to my home. And then I hand it to them again, and then make sure I say, call or pay whatever it is. I don't care, because, put this way, I, I, I will say, if you give a ticket for the car, you're going to look at the VIN numbers or license plate numbers. You can't just give the, whatever the owner, so if the car parked at the parking lot and you don't even know who's the owner and you just, if the police write a ticket, they're going to write a what number, you know, what car is that? What kind of car, license plate numbers, all VIN numbers, you know, that kind of stuff. You can't just give it to the owner of the building, you know? That making not too much sense to me, you know? And I did a call, Scott, three times, and then I left a one message. After that, I gave it up the message and he never called me back. He never sent me email. And I believe he has all my phone numbers and everything, so he has all my information, okay? And the addresses have never been changed. I live in the four oh nine for past twenty-two years, okay, which is the air sovereignty. That's all I'm, I, I need to say, you know, but I, I don't see that. That's my responsibility to tell people what kind of car they can have it, you know? That, and they don't park on the, on the side of the street. They just park inside, you know? It bother nobody, you know? So, but another reason is the people who owns that car, and he got shot. He got shot, he, 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 he got shot three ti, uh, one time, three bullets on his body. And he's in the hospital for six months, okay? That was twenty twenty-four. And then he cannot, he cannot make a, make a payment of the house. And his sister is trying to make a part of the, the rent, you know? Right now, uh, up today, he's still three months behind. And I told him, I said, I have no choice to, to, to send you on the street because they, he has nowhere to go. And I, I say, I have a run to, I have a mortgage to pay. I have my obligation. I can't just, you know, tell my, uh, uh, bankers, say, oh, I cannot pay because somebody else don't pay me, you know? That making no sense. So, that's what I'm having right now.
Thank you very much. Um, Officer Herndon, do you have any input with regards to this case, sir?
I, I do remember him making a voicemail. I did try to attempt. I did make contact with someone. I believe it was a female. Uh, I asked if, uh, uh, Don Jack was available, and that's when they hung up on me. Uh, and I believe I've also spread this out longer than it should have been, and the case is still actually active. I just have not pursued further on it, uh, because I seen one vehicle was removed, and I, to me, that's progress. Uh, so, again, that's, uh, I've taped every citation to the property, uh, and every time I came back for reinspection, that, uh, those were removed.
And that two car's still there until today.
The same car is on site?
Same car.
And you know whose?
Same car, same people. Everything's same today.
You know whose vehicle that is?
I don't, one has a license plate, one has a license plate but expired.
Is it one of your tenants?
Yeah, yeah, that belong to them. And they all just try to tell them to, you need to move this car all of my property. And, uh, nope. Just straight tell them, say, no. I don't know what to do. And I don't really want to kick, send them out on the street because I know they have nowhere to go and they have no money. So, what you want me, so very hard for me to do it. And about, what, six, three months? I don't even count the last year, twenty twenty-four, they were probably ten thousand behind. I don't even count this money. I just say, this year, twenty twenty-five, they already three months behind. And right now's June. It's kind of difficult, you know? I have a good heart. I just don't want to kick people out just like this if they don't pay.
Sir, did you, um, by any chance, since you weren't, since, um, you're claiming that officer wasn't coming back to you, did you make any attempt for, to contact anyone else in the city of Vallejo? Since you weren't, feel that the officer wasn't returning your phone call?
No, I didn't make that offer because, what the reason is, if I called him three times, he's busy somewhere. He probably is in the field somewhere, you know what I mean? And to me, because I, well, I come to, I live in air sovereignty. I come to Vallejo every week because I have to taking care of the garbage. The garbage, if the cover, they don't cover, and they won't pick it up. It costs me eight hundred some dollars a month for, for taking care of the garbage, you know? So, I make sure every Monday I taking care of garbage, the Tuesday morning, they come and pick it up. But...
Question, Mr. Jack?
Yes.
So, with regards to this tenant that you know will not remove willfully the vehicle off property?
Yeah.
It's costing you money, correct?
It is, it is. Actually, well, I, I, I do have a lot of respect for their mother. Their mother living there before, and she died. She died twenty twenty, I think, early twenty-four, she died. She was a cable car driver in San Francisco, and she's a very nice lady, very nice. Yeah, but went to the, the kids, you know, so...
So, with regards to the vehicle, how are you able to get the vehicle removed off the site if you're not willing to have that conversation? Or that gentleman tells you, no, I'm not, and it's costing you money?
I know, but the reason I call Scott is I would just say, just Scott, why don't you send a tow truck, tow this car away? You know?
There's certain rules and regulations, obviously.
It's, it's kind of hard for me to, to, you know?
Yeah.
And, and I would just, because some kind of, the brother is a kind of mean, mean person, I, you know? I can't just say, you know, tow the car, then I don't know what's going to happen next. This is kind of a little bit scary for me to just street eviction them on the street, you know? That's tough.
Sir, I, I realize you, you didn't want to ask the, uh, code enforcement officer, why don't you just tow it away? But it's not, hang on, it's on your property?
Yeah.
Your responsibility.
Yes.
Right to have that car towed off.
I understand, I understand.
But, and you're, and you're, not doing that has caused you to get these fines and, and, you know?
I totally understand that point, but the, the point is, this brother is a kind of very mean, so...
I understand.
I only deal with the sister. Every time I, I, I see the brother, I would just, uh, you know, go a little bit far from him. I, I don't want to, you know?
So, let me, let me just, for clarification purposes.
Okay.
You have a car on your property that you feel you can't remove because you're a little nervous about somebody else's retaliation, correct? Is that kind of that road you're going down right now?
That's, that's true.
However, with that being said, the thirty-three hundred and eighty-three dollars is now your responsibility because you do not want to go down that road. You, you see how we're set here? So, we, we, we can't really say to you, we'll waive a fine if you're not even willing to take the initiative to do it yourself. You see, so, we don't have much leeway here to work that out with you.
I see what you're saying.
Right.
I see what you're saying.
So, with regards to that, and you probably have a, please feel free.
I will also add that you mentioned that the, the vehicle is still there, so this is an ongoing issue, which leaves you open to potentially continuing citation and continuing...
Because they have another vehicle left by mother and, uh, they had an accident. They're no, no longer to drive. They just park in front of the garage. Now become a three cars now.
So, I might make a suggestion.
Yeah.
Uh, these vehicles could be put in any number of different places besides your property. So, I suggest you, uh, look for some places where they could be placed, you know, without any problem or have your tenant do that, and that would solve it. Well, or your tenant could do that. He, he could take these vehicles and put them in any number of different places.
Yeah, but I give them so many times suggesting, every time I got a chance to see the sister, I give the suggestion, but they don't do it. And then, okay.
Yeah, so now you're stuck with this situation where you have to pay this?
Yeah, 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 I do. I, I, I understand.
And as, um, the vice chair just mentioned, that this is, it's a continuous process. So, a thought came, if you have, as he was speaking, our other board member, is maybe you'll take these vehicles and have them towed to a storage facility off your property somewhere so that the property is not being fined anymore. That's a suggestion.
But I got to pay the storage myself?
Or you would rather pay three thousand dollars for this or less, at storage price? We're not going to worry, but I, I, we can't get involved with the storage aspect.
I, I'd love to make a deal. If you void that thirty-three hundred, I guarantee I go put it in the storage. How's that sound?
Unfortunately.
You want me to pay that thirty-three hundred and then, well, maybe Scott later give me another ticket?
Well, that's kind of...
I hope not.
Unfortunately, that may be the road.
I, I hope not, you know, but you know, it's not, Scott, no, that two car is not belong to me. I don't have a junk car like this, okay? And then, I don't know what to say.
So, at this time, we are going to move on with this case as...
Okay, all right. I, I need to say what I need to say.
Absolutely, appreciate that.
If it's, I, I think to, in bottom of my heart, I think this is not fair at all. But, hey, you are the, you are the property owner.
Yes, sir.
So, that's it. That tells me, you know what I mean, so...
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, okay. So, I'm done? Okay, thank you. Oh, so I'm going to pay this?
Are you able to do a payment plan?
Payment plan is better. Is that, do I have to pay extra, I mean, more than thirty-three hundred?
No, just contact Ms. Karen.
Okay, that sounds better. Okay.
We can establish a payment plan for you.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Jack, if you can write your email address here.
Moving on to our next case, case number five. It is the, uh, case number VA two-four dash zero-two-seven-nine.
How you guys doing?
How you doing, sir? Proceed.
I'm not going to talk about anything. I'm going to just say, I'm trying to get the penalty off, but I don't know what you guys could do. If not, I'll just do a payment plan, and I want to know who I can talk to, the highest person I could talk to about these kind of car situations on properties.
What's the car situation? Explain.
Oh, this, this?
Yeah.
Oh, you want me to explain it?
Yeah, what's the situation with the car?
Oh.
What do you mean when you're saying, who's the highest person you can talk to about this car situation?
I have cars on my property. I've had cars on my property for the whole time I've stayed there, and I just started getting fines on them. And, I mean, I wasn't there. I'm not always at my property, so I didn't see this until I got the penalty, but I, I was, I'm not, I don't feel like talking about that because I've already heard other people saying stuff about that, but...
Are these operable cars? Are these cars drivable, operable? Are they licensed and registered?
Uh, I have a track car that I bring to Sonoma. It's, but it's been on my property my, the whole ti, twenty years, and I've just now getting fined on it. I don't know why, but it works. I don't drive it on these roads, but...
So, it's not a street vehicle? It's a race vehicle, basically?
Yes.
Is it registered?
Is it in DMV's database? Yes, it is. No, no, yes.
Oh, okay.
Uh, Officer Herndon, do you have any background?
Uh, yes, under the ordinance, uh, it was stating that, that there was, uh, that the vehicles would have to be driven if considered as operable, uh, with the license plate and up-to-date tags, uh, where it had, uh, I believe, out-of-date tags. And when I did a reinspection, they removed the plate and everything entirely. Uh, they, I did post the citation on the property, uh, and that's when they, uh... Uh, and that's when they, uh, basically, I guess, removed the violation out of public view. Because we can't go searching.
Yeah, I talked to, uh, my room, I'm not there all the time. I work, uh, LA and stuff for months at a time. But my roommate said, he was like, he talked to somebody and they said, you can do this to fix it, and I did that to fix it, so.
So I have a question. Where can a citizen of Vallejo who registers their car as a non-op, put their vehicle? It can't go in a driveway?
Well, I guess, I'm, I guess I'm fixed now. They told me I'm fixed, but.
No, I, I'm just saying that in general, where can a non-op?
I can answer that.
Okay.
It has to be in a storage yard or in your garage.
Oh.
It's, it has to be stored inside of a structure.
Okay.
Not on your, not in your driveway.
So it could go in a garage, not on a driveway?
Correct.
Okay.
So I'm just asking about the penalty they took off and I'll pay it or you guys could put me on a payment plan?
Would you like a payment plan?
Yes, that would be nice.
See Karen?
Okay.
So there's nothing you could do about a late fee?
Not at all.
Just, just to clarify as well, uh, yeah, and, and regarding your questions, the, the, the code is set, um, not by us. We're here to enforce it, but you can always participate in, um, contacting like your, the city council and expressing your opinions about the vehicle code. Um, regarding your question about who do you speak to about this?
I want to know who's the highest person I can speak to about this.
Yeah, and, um.
Who would it be?
City council every Tuesday.
Maybe the mayor, yeah, city council, the mayor.
The mayor, okay.
Every other Tuesday.
All right, moving on to our next case. Uh, case number CE twenty-four dash twelve eighty-seven. Is there anyone here representing that case? CE twenty-four one two eight seven.
My name is CEO.
Anybody online that's representing that, uh, Manny, sir?
No hands currently raised for this item, Chair.
Thank you. Case CE twenty-four one two eight seven. Final call. Hearing none, moving to the next case. Next case CE twenty-four zero four two one. How you doing, sir?
Good.
Proceed.
I just try a little bit English, that better for you guys. I, I, I not speak very well.
No problem.
So, uh, my name, uh, Andrew Nguyen. My address, uh, three four nine Winchester, Texas, Vallejo, Cleveland. Uh, I, um, uh, first of all, I have, uh, one ticket, uh, I, I, I remember maybe last year. And then, uh, I don't know, I, because I have the, the gate for the medal and I put the something high a little bit and then I have the city, uh, send me the, the, the letter. And when I go, I look the letter and then I go, go to the city. I talk with the, the guy, he saw that, he tell me go back to clean up. And I just go back to clean up everything and then, uh, I think everything clear. And then after that, I don't hear nothing because I don't speak like I don't call. And then I, uh, I think it's okay, but the fine, the second time I get bit, uh, the letter, second time, yeah. I see the, the ticket, uh, four hundred something, yeah.
Officer Herden, you have any background, please?
Uh, yes. So, uh, this was also a case I inherited, uh, from Sofia Valente, who is no longer with the city. And we did go out there, we posted the, uh, the notice on the property. Uh, he did come in about that. Uh, he asked about the, uh, the NOV. Uh, and I basically instructed him that he would have to remove the trash junk and debris from the driveway. Uh, and that's the last, he did remove everything and it was closed.
So property's cleared, case closed?
I closed the case.
Okay. So where, so where are we at with this? Um, Mr. Dong, why are we?
He gets a citation.
Correct, this, he received a notice of violation and then after that, the violation was corrected. Therefore, the fine amount is owed. At the time, he could have asked for an appeal.
Do you understand the, the conversation is, at the time you received the notice of violation, you were supposed to appeal that violation at that time and say that, whatever reason, you need a little bit more time, you'll get it, whatever that needs to be done in order to get it cleaned up. There was no appeal and the violations stand. And then the officer came back, noted you cleaned up the area and then he closed the case. However, the fine is still due. So the four oh nine still stands today? A four, what is it, four oh nine? Four thirty-one, excuse me, four thirty-one?
I don't have the money for right now because I still have the water behind for the city, for the payment land a lot. And then also too much going on for me, my family, too much going on for right now. Even the, yeah, babe, everything, you know, a lot for me right now. So I just listen, you guys, whatever, you guys just give me, uh.
Would a, would a, would a payment, a payment plan?
Work for community, I will listen for you guys because whatever you guys did, very, very thing, yeah.
Would, would a payment plan work for you? If we can have Karen set up a payment plan for installments?
Because right now the payment land, I still have a lot payment land right now. I have no read for me right now.
Yeah.
Too much, yeah, even the water, I have to take care of the payment land not correctly either, yeah.
So we only, we only have really an option, okay? Either you pay the full price and it, or you don't pay and it gets levied as taxes on your property. Or you can set up a payment plan with, uh, with staff and they can help you out that way. Those are really only the options that we have available. Stand by for a second.
Uh, through the chair.
Please.
So if they, if you go into a payment plan with us, your first payment would be due like pretty soon, like by next month. And then, but then if it levies against your property, you just pay, pay it through your property taxes and you know how they pay? The first, isn't the first installment due like December?
Yeah.
And then the next installment is due in April? So it might, it might be easier for him to just go that route.
Right.
And then it would be splitting that four oh nine fifty-one in two, two installments, like.
So what she's saying is that because of your, the way the tax, taxes are set up for your property, it's split into two tax, um, payments? So you pay taxes at the end of the year and then you pay taxes on your property in the middle of the year, let's say, right? What happens is if you have that four hundred and thirty-one dollars go and be levied against your property, that four hundred dollars will be split into two payments with the payment due roughly next month or the next three, two or three months?
It'll be due December.
Due in December. So the first payment would probably be about two hundred and fifteen dollars, roughly, minus any, um, um, uh, increases? Yeah. And then the second one would be due the following year, which would be twenty twenty-six, uh, somewhere around April. And that would be an additional two hundred dollars and those would be on your taxes. So when you pay your taxes for your property, that would be part of the process. It'd be a little bit easier on you so you don't have to pay the four hundred right now. Or would you have to pay installments? As you just said, you can't pay any more installment, um, payments. So that wouldn't be something you need to worry about? You would just pay them when your taxes are due? Is, is, that's our other option for you.
Uh, look like I listen, you guys, I clean up, but I don't, I don't, uh, sometimes I read the letter, I don't understand and then I follow up. And I just need you guys help me out today, please, because I have a lot of kids, I have a lot of, look like every single, you know, money I count every single for right now.
Right.
So.
This is how we're helping you out right now, yeah?
Can you just, uh, job for me? I will listen, you guys, I don't say nothing, but I will take care, but you have to job me the right and then whatever, I can get the, the water behind. They almost shut down my water, also, yeah. That's why I do, yeah, I have to take care of that.
So. Yeah, so Karen, can you, can you help assist him with the tax situation? And help him with those, those, those two installment payments like that?
So it, it would just automatically?
It would just automatically?
That's how the county sets up the payments.
Okay, so then he doesn't need to worry about anything?
No one has to do anything. We just leave it as is on the list.
Okay.
So it gets on his property taxes, then it, they.
Then they split it.
And then they split it like that. So there, at this point in time, he would be done for his case today?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll close your case today. And then the money will, then the fine will roll over to your taxes. You won't owe any money today. And it'll just be on your taxes. And when you pay your taxes and the taxes are split into two installments, you'll pay half of your fine on your first installment of taxes, which will be in December. And you'll pay the second half of your fine in April of twenty twenty-six, which is the other half of, so the four hundred dollars will be split.
And then, uh, look like I paid the mortgage, but I don't know, I paid the tax, everything, I don't know. I just pay together, but.
Yeah, it'll, it'll go right to that. So you won't even, yeah, so you'll see it when you, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It'll, it'll be all taken care of for you. So at this point in time, thank you very much, sir.
Yeah, thank you so much, you guys, for having, thank you so much for helping today.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the next case. Or do we need to take a quick little two, three minute break right now? Is that what we're looking at? Are we okay? Everybody's good to move on? Okay, good. All right, case number, uh, CE twenty-three dash one five one five. Case CE twenty-three dash fifteen fifteen.
Can you state the address, Chair Timison?
Okay, yeah, absolutely. Um, seven six zero Starfish Drive. Seven six zero Starfish Drive.
And state the owner name too, because sometimes.
Absolutely. Um, Mr. Robert Little Senior. Robert Little Senior.
No one online is raising their hand either, Chair.
Thank you very much. So the last time, CE twenty-three fifteen fifteen, seven six zero Starfish Drive, Robert Little Senior. Hearing no one, moving on. We're moving into case number ZV twenty-four zero zero three one. Address is one three two Michigan Street. Mary Morgan or Mary J. Morgan. Z like zebra, V like Victor, twenty-four dash zero zero three one. Address, one three two Michigan Street, Mary J. Morgan.
Through the chair, no, uh, users online raising their hand.
Thank you, sir. Last time. Z like zebra, V like Victor, twenty-four zero zero three one, one thirty-two Michigan Street, Mary J. Morgan. I'll, I'll reach back out about that one. Hearing no one, we'll move on. It was brought to my attention of, uh, regarding case number CE twenty-three fifteen fifteen that, uh, Robert, uh, Little Senior, uh, is deceased. It was a note on the. File, did we look at the? Judith Little?
You can consider the protest because it was, um, received. So you can consider, you can do what you want to with it. Yes, you, but that's all the information you have then would be just on the objection or on the notice, you know, appeal notice.
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
One action you also could do is, is to have it, uh, to request to move it to next year's tax roll. If you want to wait for, but I mean, it could also prolong probate and maybe other stuff too, so I don't know. It's just, it's up to you guys is. You wouldn't, you have to turn on your microphone.
I'm sorry. In regards to that case, what, uh, what is our option with the waiver of the fee? Because if there's the, go ahead, I'm sorry.
You can do that.
Okay.
Yep.
What are we waiving?
So, so Mr. Robert Little Senior, uh, that the property is addressed to and, uh, owner of, uh, is deceased. And so, uh, who are we levying this fine against if, uh, unless it would be under a probate that the fine would be part of the probate, um.
I don't know that you know that.
I don't.
Could be held a joint tenancy with his wife.
Yeah, strike, yes.
Wouldn't it still be levied against the house? So why we can't go through that process? I mean, it's still going to the house, someone has to pay the property taxes. And if they don't, then it does what it does.
Fair enough.
I was just advising him that he could, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's a decision for the board to make. I would just ask the question to see if there was an option. Yeah.
Okay, so.
So moving on to the next one.
I believe we were left on item number eleven?
All right, so we're, we're left off, uh, at ZV's twenty-four zero zero thirty-one. Hearing nobody at that, we're moving on to the next case, which would be CE twenty-four one two eight zero, one fifty-eight Genoa Street, uh, excuse me, Genoa Court, uh, either Daniel Stephen Lindy or Stephen Daniel Lindy. That's case CE twenty-four one two eight zero, one fifty-eight Genoa Court, Daniel Stephen Lindy or Stephen Daniel Lindy.
Through the chair, uh, do not have a member of the public, uh, currently wanting to speak at this address. Through the chair, I also received payment for this today. For the full four hundred thirty-one dollars and thirty-four cents.
Excellent, all right, well, that's.
You can strike it from the list.
We can strike that from the list there. Thank you, moving on. Uh, case number CE twenty-four two one five nine. One fourteen Palo Verde Way. Elizabeth Susan Guitas or Susan Elizabeth Guitas?
Through the, through the chair again. Uh, they were here earlier and then they just decided to leave because they found out that it wasn't like a regular hearing and, um, yeah.
Which, yeah, thank you. So with that being said, we'll move on to the next case. Uh, CE twenty-three zero eight seven two. Address, seven two eight Monterey Street, Victoria F. Scott.
My name is Victorida F. Scott, not Victoria.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Monterey Street, Vallejo, California. I was here because I receive your citation regarding my broken two windows. The windows are done.
Stand by one second, Ms. Victoria.
Because of my.
One minute, one minute.
My window are done. Because of my financial situation, it took time to do it. I should not be penalized for this at all. My only income is my major social security income. I'm already eighty years old. I was here in America. I was forty-six years old. I've been here thirty-two years old. I worked like a horse. Year twenty-twenty-three, there's a pound two stone at my house on the living room. Size seventy-two by fifty-eight and the other one forty-eight inches by fifty-eight. Because that time I was in chronic kidney disease treatment, heart failure, I don't know. I don't know what to do. The time I went, I was in the doctor appointment. And when I come back, somebody already my window, somebody stole a plywood. I'm happy for that. But though, after a month or two months, Officer Sofia Valentes said be a citation. I was crying like a hell because I don't know what to do. And now, I should not be penalized for this at all. I'm already eighty years old. I'm leaving for my major social security. Now, I received another last letter from Officer Sofia saying that he put lien on my property. Being, I'm already own. I said, it's okay. Sooner or later, I'm gonna die soon. He can, she can do what she want to my property. I'm already eighty years old. And now, I asking everybody forgiveness for this bill that I cannot pay. I cannot pay my bill, three thousand eleven sixteen and ninety-three dollars. Yes, and thus all. Good luck, everybody.
Thank you. Board members, any thoughts, um, from any of our members? Karen?
Yes, through the chair, um, Senior Code Officer Lorena Brusagaga is, is here on behalf of the former, uh, code officer who was assigned to this case, so just.
Okay, thank you.
Just so you guys know.
Please proceed. How you doing? Good to see you here.
So far, what I'm gonna read is the outstanding fines. Um, so far, the case is.
Ms. Victorina? Yeah, do you want to wait to hear the final results?
Proceed.
If you could have a seat, please.
So Ms. Valencia issued an NOV at three-twelve-twenty-four for not compliance of the violations. Then after that, she did a couple, other two citations that brought the total to three thousand one hundred and sixteen ninety-three cents, in which that added two of the late fees of five-oh-three-ninety-three for the first and second citation for not compliance. As we stand with the case right now, um, it's been closed and no action has been taken except, um, Ms. Valencia is no longer here to represent the fines itself.
And the, the issues have been corrected as well? That's why the case is closed? Is that?
The case is closed because nobody has follow-up on it yet.
Oh.
Yeah, so there, some of the violations still stand.
Okay.
And what are some of the violations?
Uh, some of the violations we had was trash and debris, and they keep ongoing violations, so, as time permitted and done inspections, at this present time, we haven't had the currents. But the items that were cited were trash and debris.
Has anyone made contact at that point in time and offered any additional services, opportunities for any additional services to assist?
Uh, nobody has called our office to request none of the, kind of waive any fees or anything. This is the first time I'm hearing about the case.
Does she have family members? I mean, I want.
Does she, does she have, you noticed that she had any family members that can assist or?
Every time the property was inspected, according to the chronology, there was no members or anybody that we could get a hold of. Which is their regular duties, uh, regular certify. Now, that's where we need to follow our duties.
Through the chair, I believe she testified that she was, um, receiving treatment for. Yeah, kidney disease. Yeah, I don't know where she was, but she's, she's here if you want to call her back down. Are we authorized to waive fees? Yeah, they keep doing that. Mm-hmm.
There you go, here, Mike. Is it, there you go, Laura.
Okay, yes, you are.
Yeah, I think, uh, this might fall into our exception, exceptional circumstances that justice might require an adjustment of the fee to, uh, accommodate her situation, which seems to be a hardship one, since she has kidney disease and she's on social security and she's eighty years old. So, uh, perhaps we could, um, if it's a problem paying the fee, which she says it is, perhaps we could reduce it to a lower amount to help her.
Ms. Scott, are you able to come back to the microphone? Yes.
So, um, Ms. Scott, why would it be hard for you to pay this fee?
I think she needs to repeat the question.
So how much money do you have in your account, bank account?
He's saying, how much amount of money do you have to be able to pay the fee? Are you able to make any payments to what is on, on the balance?
The windows?
Uh, no, we're talking about how much are you able to pay in regards to the fine? Like, are you able to make a payment of fifty dollars, a hundred dollars?
Need to pay my, my citation?
Yes, how much do you able to afford?
I'm sorry, I cannot pay at all. I, my social security is not enough for me, pay my mortgages, my bills, my food, you know, I have, I have only having my food for the food bank.
All right.
My social security is not enough for me at all.
So did your kidney disorder prevent you from?
That's why I'm asking everybody forgiveness. I cannot pay that bill at all again. I only buy myself my house.
I have a question for you.
I can pay that, you can pay.
And we do understand.
Anyway, sooner or later, I'm gonna die. Like said, Officer Sofia, he put lien on my property, go ahead. I don't care.
We don't, we don't want to do that.
I only buy myself. I don't care. I cannot pay any, I cannot pay.
Okay, so we're gonna help you out. My question to you is, do you have anyone to help you around the house as far as your gardening and trash and debris, lawn, maintenance? And, no?
Through the chair, we do have, uh, we do have, oh, okay. Were you gonna say the same thing probably I was gonna say? Yeah, I'll, I'll let.
Just lien put.
We'll have Ted come up.
That's all I can say.
Chairman, um, we have, sorry, we have access to Healthy Vallejo to assist the elderly, disabled, or financially unable to, you know, afford lawn care and cleaning services. I will definitely go right now and get her contact information for Apostle Summers, that can clean up the violations.
We appreciate that, yes, that's what I was going.
Thank you very much for that.
And one more thing through the chair, uh, I do have personal knowledge of this case, and I do know that the former code officer did try to contact her multiple times and got no response, so, yeah.
And that could be due to her being out, uh, unfortunately, yeah. Um, I'm gonna throw something on the board as a option that I feel, um, and you guys can weigh in on this as you see fit. Um, with all this that has been said and the fact that, um, her condition and her inabilities and so forth, I'm willing to waive a, a fee here. If that's something that you guys are willing to do so. If there's not, then I'm listening, I'll entertain anything else that you would like to try.
I'll second the motion.
Let me present it as an option and, uh, as a option, are, is the board in favor of waiving, um, Mrs. Scott's fee, uh, total amount?
And then I could let you guys bring it to the.
Yeah, I move that we, that we waive, um, Mrs. Scott's three thousand one hundred, three thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-three citation. CE two-three zero-eight-seven-two.
Second.
And that fee would be waived in entirety, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Can we take a real call vote?
Yeah.
Please.
Did we get a second?
Yeah, we did.
Yes.
Sorry. At the same time, okay, thanks.
Uh, Chairperson Tennyson?
Approved.
Vice Chairperson Schultz?
Approve.
Uh, Board Member Cavalli?
Approve.
Board Member Gaddis?
Yes.
Board Member Taylor?
Yes.
And Board Member Yurabey?
Yes.
Anonymous?
Ms. Scott, the board has unanimously, unanimously decided that we are going to waive the three thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-three cent, uh, fee. You do not owe that. So you are clear of that fee? Is that, do you understand what I'm saying?
Thank you, sir.
For going further, there'll be a, there'll be a gentleman that's coming back to get your information so that he can assist you with all of your lawn care and some of your, some elderly services for you, okay?
Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Please, please make sure to follow up with that gentleman so that they can assist with your lawn care so that you can avoid any future fines and citations, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So just have a seat. The gentleman will be right back. He's coming in the door right now. He'll be able to give you, get your information from you. Just, Ms. Scott, turn around. That, turn around. That gentleman right there. He'll help you.
It's Code Officer Tarver. Thank you, Ted.
Thank you.
Bless you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that being said, um, we will be, uh, that will be the close of our door. Are we still going to, uh, have this, um?
Yes, and he said he would like to try to speak in English.
Okay, so we can revisit this particular case now?
Yes. Moi, you can come up to the.
And this, this would, um, was this one oh-two? Okay, all right, let's go back. Oh, there go, I got it, yeah. Well, no, he's on here. One oh-one Serpentine Avenue?
Yes.
Okay.
Item number one zero, is that one zero-two on the?
One zero-two, so the case number is CE twenty-four one-six-five-six.
Yes. So I know it's, uh, it's too late for talk about the, um, late fee, but, um, but, uh, can you, can you guys forgive it? Or because a little bit money less, because, um, I don't know that at all, you know, like, if I know it's earlier, that of course, I hit you come earlier, you know? But my mom, she don't know English. She don't know anything. Yeah, I know it's too late already, but how can I do? I, I have paid his mortgage, house bill, water bill, P T and E, foods, a loss. Even, uh, I, like, you know, credit card payment right now is really hard for me too, you know, yeah.
Would, uh, would, is this something that, uh?
One thousand five hundred is very high for, I'm sorry about that, so.
Would a payment plan help you with this?
I have a lot of payment of plan. I have a lot of payment plan already. I have a loss. One thousand five hundred, that's a loss.
So that would be, uh, Karen? No problem. So this, this, uh, this gentleman has the, pretty much the same situation in regards to, um, not being able to afford a payment plan, not being able to make the full payment, so forth. Um, so that would be another tax roll situation where we've split the cost, where the city and county would split the costs?
Well, one other option we could do is, um, what we call an extended payment plan. And, um, but that would need managerial approval and a lot of back and forth, um, talking with him and his, and staff. Um, and it also would require a payment by next month, the first, at least the first installment. So it just depends on, wait, what is the amount right now? Sorry. Trying to gather my bearings. I believe this amount would put him at a, gosh, I can't remember it by, by memory. I forget if it's eight months or twelve months. So, I mean, you guys could even, uh, already approve right now an extended payment plan or something, or if you could say he.
Can you?
Certain amount.
Can you confirm, uh, the amount of this that is late fees?
I'm sorry?
How much of this fifteen hundred is, uh, late fee?
I don't have my, uh.
Yeah, we don't have the.
You don't have the case with you, huh?
Yeah, okay. Um, and, and so, so would you be able to make, uh, if, if we were able to extend, um, an extended payment plan, would you be able to make a first payment, um, by next month?
Anything help for me for less money on that, or I need to pay pool? You guys can load out the payment?
Yeah, if they, if they make the payments lower and spread it out over a time period for you.
No, I mean, like, like, uh, fifteen hundred, can you, like, low half, man, about like, you know, seven hundred, eighty, eight hundred for that?
So the late fees, oh, God, I can't remember.
The late fee probably.
Five oh-three?
It's five oh-three probably is the late fee. Five oh-three and couple, twenty-nine cents or something.
Yeah, I wanted to confirm if that was just the one late fee or if there was more than one.
Yeah, because it just depends on the fee schedule when, and when it was.
Right, exactly.
I could double check all that.
Because I, I.
You guys don't have to, like, say a dollar or not. You could say you guys will extend, extinguish the late fee and then we can make the payment plan based on the remaining amount. Um, so we don't, we won't know the, you know, because he didn't file in time unless, do you have your paperwork? He does have his paperwork with him.
You have your paperwork with you?
Can I see it, Moi? Okay. Okay. I'll just, through the chair, the late fee amount is $530.79.
And that's just the one time, that's not multiple?
That's correct, it's one late fee for the citation, so just to go over the breakdown, it was a notice of violation in the amount of $431.34, citation one, in the amount of $596.72, and a late fee of 530.79.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any thoughts from any of the members as to how we should structure this payment plan?
I do have a question for the.
No, we extended, he would have to, you know, make the payment for next month, and then extend it to the eight to 12 month, that's fine, but as far as reductions, I disagree with that because the ones that, the appeals that came before us, we did not do that with their late fee, so I don't feel we should have to do that with this gentleman, we have to be fair across the board.
I understand that, I can understand where you're coming from, I would ask from our attorney if there is any guideline regarding language translation expectations from the city, that was the only reason for that, I felt that this was different, but if there's no duty.
Well, it should have worked, so, yeah, I believe since we offered it and we made it available and it didn't work, that's a problem that we need to fix, and the only, you can make an accommodation, you can do what you want, because you have that wiggle room in the code. The reason that, what was the reason that he didn't appeal the citations previously? Was something to do with his mother, but I didn't understand.
It looked like Karen had a.
Yeah, it was, he was saying to me that there was, so first of all, someone was out of the country, I think he was out of the country, and the only one at home was his mother who can't speak English, and I guess she didn't understand the notice, threw away the notice, so they get another notice, and then like, maybe didn't understand what was happening or whatever, and then, so I did speak with a relative of his, and we did set up a payment plan last month, and he never made the first payment, so he kind of, you know.
Okay.
He didn't make the first payment, and so, and he was, and he was a little bit rude to me on the phone, but when we, he and I spoke, he understood, you know, he's like, I understand, I need to pay this, can I just get on a payment plan, so, yeah.
So can you address, what was the reason you didn't, you entered a payment plan and you didn't make the first payment?
I have a lot of payment already, I paid the house bill, you know, and everything already, a loss.
So in regards to that, if we've already made arrangements for you to make a payment plan, which would have been your reduction as you were asking for in the price, right? Because you're paying less and you're unable to do that, we don't have another option for you to make another payment plan? We've already, we've already tried to make accommodations for you by providing you with a payment plan, and you didn't even make the first payment, so how does, from our eyes, point of view, it's that why would we do something else differently if you can't make your obligation to make the first payment, right? Understand that, understand that, so if the payment plan's not going to work, and it's going to be a less amount than the $700 that you're saying that you're willing to pay, we can't even have good reason to believe that you're going to make that payment either, right? Does that make sense? So I leave that up to the board members at this point in time, to, as to any other options, but as it stands right now, it doesn't, it appears that he's unable to make the payment plan, and.
You're in our conversation, let the county deal with it.
So.
I believe we should leave this on the special assessments role.
Leave it as standard, okay.
Special assessments.
So with that being said, sir, unfortunately, there will be no reduction as it stands right now, and unfortunately, based on your own, you know, inability to make any installment payments, we have no other option but to keep this, close this case and leave it as it is, okay? Thank you, sir. You're right, go ahead, go ahead.
Just clarifying that he has no opportunity to continue a regular payment plan with us.
If you, if you, would you like to enter into a payment plan at this amount, we will not reduce the amount, but you can do a payment plan, or would you prefer that it just is assessed with your taxes?
The money stays.
The money remains the same, you would just go into a brand new payment installment plan to help you out so that you pay less money instead of the entire at one time. Are you willing to go into a payment plan, sir? Or is that, is that out of your?
How about for a payment plan, how about for?
Staff will help you with that, if you decide to go that way, then I'll let Karen go ahead and make that decision with you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
So this is my understanding that he's in a payment plan at this point in time.
I disagree, but y'all gonna outnumber me, he voided the first one, but it's okay. He was supposed to send a payment last month and he didn't, y'all give him another chance so he can't do it again? It comes back to us, okay, whatever. Right, that's fine.
Oh, through the chair, I kind of heard you talking, from last year's hearing, I believe that if they may, don't make the first payment, there's time to, you direct that it still go on this year's tax roll?
That's what actually I was going to ask.
Yes, so it, you're not delaying anything, so if they miss the next, if they miss the first payment of the payment plan from tonight, then.
Okay, so just for clarification, if we make this arrangement with you and you miss the first payment, that kind of voids out the program of payment installations and the entire amount will go onto the tax roll, which means it'll be part of your taxes when you pay your taxes for your mortgage or house and things of that nature, okay?
And just clarifying, that'll be the, the general thing for all payment plans discussed tonight.
Yes.
Like, if they don't make that first payment, it will go on to their property taxes.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification. All right, everybody, that appears to be the last one, if I'm not mistaken, the last one that we had to, to assess today, we just need to tally up, what are, okay.
Through the chair, we do have a couple of users online who've had their hands raised, who wanted to speak, whether, they may not be on the, on the list, but I'll give them the three minutes, we'll start with Speaker Ronan, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, I did submit the, the appeal by the date that was suggested, May 31st, so I should have been on the docket, my property address is 2163 Garnet Circle, I received several citations, and each one I received, I responded that I was no longer the property owner, my property sold and was foreclosed on last year, the closing date on the house was 3/6/24, the first citation I believe was 11/20/24, so 10 months later, I was not the property owner, and every citation I got through the mail, I called and left a message with the officer, I never received one call back regarding these citations, regarding the fact that I'm not the property owner, it's a matter of public record that my house was sold on that date, and I, so I don't know why I keep getting the notices and why I'm being charged with $4,000 for trash to a house that I don't own, there's a Mercedes in the picture with a license plate that's not registered to me, I haven't lived there, I moved out of Vallejo and left my house in February of '24. So, you know, I know you don't do the validity of this, but I don't own the house, I didn't own the house at the time of these citations, it's now, it's verifiable, so I don't understand why I keep getting citations and why I'm still being charged with this, I don't own the house.
Okay, well, we actually wrote you a letter, Mr., is it Fainov?
Sure.
We wrote you a letter stating that you weren't going to be on the special assessments because we did see that the property changed over, there were some fines that were assessed while you were still the owner, so that will just be sent to collections, but we are in the process of notarizing the lien release for the remaining that were issued after the date, so, yeah, so we can deal with that offline. So you should be receiving, I guess you have like two or three address changes, and we have been trying to send this letter to you to tell you, hey, you know, we've removed you from the list because we saw that the ownership changed, occurred back in whatever month you said it was.
Yeah, I beg any citations for better part of a year, my address just changed, but now it's hard to get it, okay, that's fine, anyway, so, yeah, the $4,178 is not mine, correct?
Not that full amount, there is a part of that amount that will be sent to collections, and we can talk about that offline, because that's not what we're here to talk about tonight.
Okay, I don't know how to talk about it offline, I've tried calling people about this since I got the first citation, and nobody ever calls me back, so.
Okay, my direct line is 707-553-7290.
Hold on one second, I don't even have a pen, of course, I don't have a pen here, hold on one second. Sorry, you have a pen, go ahead.
That's okay, area code 707?
Yes, ma'am.
553.
Okay.
7290.
90, and your name was again, I'm sorry?
Karen Ang.
Karen Ang, well, thank you very much, and I will be calling you tomorrow, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and through the chair, we have one more speaker with their hand raised, Zoom user, please unmute yourself, you have the floor.
Thank you for giving me the time, I received the letter, and I submitted the paperwork to me here today, my case number is CE 241165, and my name did not get called.
Can you repeat that case number, please?
CE 24-1165.
That's number 12.
I see a number 634806 Sheridan Street?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, you would need to provide.
Proof of ownership. That was crossed off of our shortlist.
Yeah. He didn't provide proof of ownership or anything prior to.
My ownership is present through the Secretary of State, it's through an LLC company, I bought this property about two years ago.
Can you state your name, please?
Muat Zghoul.
And would you mind spelling that for the record?
Sure, M-U-A-P-A, last name, Z-G-H-O-U-L.
Okay, thank you.
So Karen, seeing that this is off, has been scratched off of our itinerary for the day, are this something that you're going to have to have an offline conversation? Okay, so it's not even, yeah, it's not even to be assessed on this particular one, because it's been scratched already, is it going to be on, is this going to be on the roll?
It will be, it will be assessed.
Okay, still be assessed, okay, thank you. So, the gentleman that's online right now, you will have to contact Karen Ang for the city in order to have this case reviewed, and then you can have that conversation and determine what the next steps are.
Karen, Ms. Ang, you're going number one more time, direct 707?
Yes, 553-7290.
And what time, can I call you Monday to Friday?
I'm here every other Friday. Yeah, if you, if you call between the hours of nine and three, generally, we have staff answering between those times.
Do you want to also offer your email address?
Oh, yeah, my email address too is, I'm going to say it and then I'm going to spell it, so it's karenang@cityofvallejo.net, and that's K-A-R-E-N dot A-N-G at cityofvallejo.net.
Okay, thank you so much, I saw.
Thank you.
And that does it for speakers at this time, chair.
All right, thank you, Manny, appreciate it. So now we need to tally up the total, and then make our extractions from that.
Manny has brought up the list via this Excel list, you should be able to see on your screens, right? They should see.
Yes, it's on your screens. Scroll, oh man, how are we going to do this? So some people, as, like you can see, some people made some payments, and so, let's see, how are we going to do this? Which one did we extinguish, it was the Victoria Scott 728.
Number one. Number one.
Number one on, oh, number one on the long list, okay.
Yeah, all the way at the top.
All the way at the top of the list. Yeah, so if you could put parentheses around that number, it'll subtract it. Let's see, and then, we didn't reduce anyone else's, right, or? Yeah, and I think everyone else's payments are there, yeah, so we just need to go back to, and then for, just for the record, for fire prevention, there were no appeals, so that's why no one from their staff attended.
Thank you.
Did you, on number 93, is that noted as paid already as well? Oh, yep, I see it, perfect.
So when you guys make your motion, just make sure to specifically into the record say the code enforcement total, then the fire prevention total, and then the grand total, and then.
Did you remove all the payment plans?
And just.
Because, did you remove the amounts for the payment plans, because I didn't hear?
Well, we're not removing those off this.
Tonight.
Balance tonight, it's only if they come, make the payments and stuff, I will let finance know, hey, this has been removed.
Great, okay.
Do we need to also include a motion for those payment plans, should I do that separately?
I would just make it in your motion.
Within the motion?
General blanket statement, yeah.
These places, these cases are eligible for a payment plan, okay.
And you have, you can read the case number, but you have 80, number 80 on the long list, 83, 84, and 102, exactly.
Okay.
Yes, code enforcement, fire prevention, and then the grand total, mention all of it in your motion.
Alright, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special assessments role with the code enforcement total of 166,370.20, the fire prevention total of 4,474, making a grand total of 170,000.844.20, noting that, uh, space, uh, cases on number 80, case number VA 24-0208, 80, uh, line number 83, case number VA 24-0279, line number 84, case number VA 24-0281, and line number 102, case number CE 24-1656, have been entered into a payment plan and may be removed if they are paid appropriately.
I second that motion.
And we have a vote, please?
Uh, Chairperson Tennyson?
Approved.
Vice Chairperson Schultz?
Approved.
Board Member Cavalli?
Approved.
Board Member Gaddis?
Yes.
Board Member Taylor?
Approved.
And Board Member Yaradie?
Approved.
Anonymous.
Excellent, great work, everybody. Alright, so with that being said, now my computer decided, I believe it was, uh, the report of the chairperson and any members of the committee, um, I have no report, does anybody else have anything they would like to report today? No other reports, moving on to item number 10, future agenda items, we have another meeting coming up July 24th, it's our regular meeting, 2025, um, so mark that down in your calendar, and if there's nothing else, our minds are clear, we can adjourn at 8:23, thank you.
Thank you.
One more question, thank you. Thank you, teammate.
Good job.
Thank you, teammate.
That was a tough one.
Lot of twists and turns in that one.
Ms. Gaddis, thank you for keeping us in check.
Ma'am.
I just, you know, I was just sitting across the board, we can't just say we gonna wave his and four other people came and said they got...